Key staff here to answer questions and participate in this roundtable discussion. We do have some guests, so I would like to invite the folks from Bridgeport to come forward at this time.
Bridge Prep.
Bridge Prep, excuse me. Excuse me, I apologize.
Bridge Prep is my next vacation site, Bridgeport.
I called you Choice Point.
Choice Point.
I don't know if you know what that was.
So, Mr. Sharza, I know you were concerned about some of the discussion we had earlier, and I invite you to share some thoughts. I would ask you to be brief and keep it to, if possible, three to five minutes, somewhere in that range. Appreciate it so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board members. First of all, having to sit here all day, I want to commend you for your public service. Not easy. Now, I represent the Florida Charter School Alliance. We have over 200 schools in the state of Florida. We represent mom and pops to big organizations, from academic, Bridge Prep, charter school associates. And my perspective is, is the process a fair process? And I want to thank, you know, Ms. Bridges, who I worked with a long time ago when I was a legislator. I'm a former teacher, high school football coach, and so she's a teacher at Miami High, so I understand things from an educational perspective. The only challenge that I have, and my observation of your process, is that there wasn't an interview with the lady who presented today, the consultant, to address her concerns. So that's the only thing in this very professional, people have been treated, everyone with respect. However, when you go to a public meeting and you hear things for the very first time, it's somewhat disconcerting. Because you're, you know, when you make, I'm not going to say an allegation, but when you say things that you read in the newspaper article, and I'm not going to say that the media is not completely factual, but some people might argue that they're not factual sometimes. And then all of a sudden, you get labeled, or there's a company labeled, or someone labeled, and that's a little bit unfair. And as an immigrant to this country, what I look for is fairness in the process, to make sure that you are given an opportunity to face your accusers, where if somebody makes an allegation, that you're able to say, this is the real reason. And that was the only thing out of what I have witnessed, and Ms. Bridges has, we've talked, right? And she's a profession, she's been around, I mean, for a very long time, this process. So that's the only thing that I would ask the board between now and when they, when you guys meet, that we can present maybe some different information to you to clarify things. You know, and again, like you said in your letter to the legislature, thank you. I'm going to say thank you. We do have some issues that we'd like to clarify, but thank you.
Absolutely. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and I would like to suggest, with some of the things that, you know, you're saying, that you contact the office prior to our next, within the next two weeks, to discuss some of that, so that, because superintendent will be making that final recommendation, and we want to get to the contractual phase, at least I personally do. So some of those things need to be discussed and outlined appropriately, so that everybody has the same information.
Absolutely, yeah. And if I can, welcome, and thank you for having us here today. It's kind of difficult when we're kind of sitting in the back, and you have 10 years of sweat equity and servicing 6,000 students throughout the state, and so many different array of populations and different counties, A to be exact, and a lot of this information is new. It wasn't really discussed, or an opportunity to dialogue was brought up.
Yes, excuse me, I apologize. Could you give us your name again, please, for our record?
Absolutely. J.C. Quintana, and I'm part of the educational service provider for Bridge Prep.
Thank you.
For smart management. So, and this process has actually been, exactly like Ms. Sharza said, it's been extremely professional, it's been cordial, there's been accessibility, not only to the superintendent of board members and to the office, but we feel that a lot of the information that was displayed here today was either misinterpreted or misread, and we just want the opportunity to work through that and clarify, particularly the one that had to do with transfer of funds. There was misinformation on that entire research, where we actually worked very closely with the superintendent of the school, because they could not enforce an opinion that was after the fact. And we came to an agreement, and that's why I, part of her statement was correct, where she said that there were, it was paid back, but because the superintendent and our organization have a great working relationship in that district, and we agreed to move forward in order to not have that misunderstanding after a further interpretation. Other than that, to be honest with you, a lot of what was brought up here through capacity and through interview, and just for the clarification, we feel we can definitely clarify and service, and have no doubt that will be a good model for your community. And we are working in the northeast area, and we did make those changes on facilities. I just confirmed with the facilities department, and definitely someone I believe offered to have a commitment, you know, that we would target a particular area that you feel was in need, and we're more than happy to work with you with that. Absolutely. And if I just can, one more thing, when it comes to the facts of our grades and so forth, I would honestly tell you, and I have that information if you want it, but the portfolio as a whole has predominantly obvious, one of those low-performing schools, the lowest 300 from 2015, it was during its initial year, predominantly Title I population, almost got DA last year by a couple of points. So, a part of going into these entities and our organization, I'm glad you did reiterate as to that we don't fear enrollment, we're open to all. And our population and our diversity, if they do provide you that information, will definitely prove that, is that we do go into areas where many are seeking salvation from whatever it is that they choose, and we get children of all different backgrounds, all different schools, in one shot. And all of a sudden, we have this one year to try to work through those mechanics, and it takes time. And we've been able to have a track record that proves that even getting them early on at such a disadvantage, or even so below grade level, they eventually do reach success. And I did want to put that on the record, because it's just, I don't want our integrity on what we've worked so hard to be misinterpreted.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your patience and coming forward, sharing some additional information.
Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Capazello to come forward, she had some comments she'd like to make.
Hi.
Hi.
Mary Ann Capazello, President of the Pope Education Association, and I would appreciate very much this time to be able to talk to you about a few issues, so, and I'm going to try to be as quick as I can be. To let you know that our state association, the Florida Education Association, has been running an initiative this year called Fund Our Future. It's about specifically talking about the starvation budgets that most, that public schools have been living on for a very long period of time. And so, I want to put up front that certainly the House budget is the budget, as Jason said, the red budget, and the Senate budget is the green budget, but the Senate budget still woefully, woefully underfunds public schools. And so I want to be really careful as we talk about that. Yes, thank you, that it's a little, you know, we're going to have, you know, a can of beans instead of, you know, a stick of celery, but at the end of the day, we have a lot of need that we need to do with the money. So, there's a couple of things going on that I wouldn't, asking your help with, because I believe that we cannot tell our schools and our teachers and our support staff that there's not money for raises, or there's tremendous, you know, tremendous cost shift that has to be done with health insurance, unless we're doing all we can to bring as much money in through the budgeting, the state budgeting process as possible. So what I'm asking Mr. Hill to start the petition around is, we've started a statewide petition that it's time to stand up for neighborhood schools, and we are asking for the House, the Senate, and the governor to come together and actually fund our public schools at $730, excuse me, $743 a student. Now, I know that sounds like a plot, but it's only 10%. We're asking for a 10% increase for state funding that, which has, you know, to try to come back against the years of underfunding. It will not fill the holes that were created, but it is a new investment in public schools so that we can fund next year's academic budgets. We are concerned about the fact that with the Senate's budget, we still will have a bit of a crisis at our bargaining table. We, you know, we're talking, Jason said, what, $19 million roughly dollars? $9 million of that comes off the top to fill your insurance hole, that $9 million a year, that leaves $10 million. That $10 million is salaries for all of your employees, not just the employees that PEA represents, because we've never been greedy to that extent, but it also is the discretionary money to do some of the things that we know that we need to do, have enough pairs in our school system, try to put in social workers, guidance counselors. Mr. Townsend this morning talked about the fact that maybe we need to do more to make our guidance be able to do the job that they need to do. That is a true statement and something we have advocated for a long time. However, the work that they do, all those ancillary jobs that have come underneath them, have to go to somebody, and your teachers can't take that on. Your teachers, their plates are full, in fact, their plates are dripping onto the floor. And so, you know, what do we do, and how do we have enough money to do what we need to do and to fill the hole? Mr. Wilson and I were having a discussion about funding, and about the fact that he, like some of you, are going to public, you know, private civic groups to talk about our needs, and the public is on board. In fact, the public understands the need for paying our teachers and support staff well. The public understands the need for the stop in the micromanaging from the state, and in fact, sometimes from even the district, but from the state certainly, in our schools, and the fact that local control is constantly lost through unfunded mandates. And I have been using this visual that Ms. Fortney was gracious enough, which is all the unfunded mandates. So as we talk about things, the other thing that I don't know that we completely understand is, I hear that the voucher bill is going to pass, the largest expansion of choice, public school, private school, religious school, and I think that I'm not hearing enough conversation for just how devastating that cut will be to the school system, because all of that is coming directly out of the FEFP, which means it's money that we will get, pass through, and go on to whatever entity. So while McCays may be on the, you know, on the lane, the reality is, is we're now opening the door potentially for parents who already have their students enrolled in a private school or a religious school to turn around and ask for the money out of our FEFP. So what we're doing with the fact that, yes, thank you, Senate, that it's more than we've seen in a long time, which frankly, is saying something, but not a tremendous amount, is that we are still in, we are still in a place where we're going to be hard-pressed to be able to keep all of what we are doing for our schools and expand what we know we need, social workers, psychologists, mental health counselors, behavior specialists. Ms. Miller talked about the fact that her phone rings off the hook, it is, in fact, I believe it's actually sussumed salaries to some extent, as being the single biggest problem that is coming, there's that, and then there's workload, but the, and it's not just your ESE students, and I think that's a very key point as well. You know, it used to be, oh, that's ESE, no, 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 these are, these are regular ed students that are struggling, either socially or behaviorally, and they are driving time away from instruction, and they're actually driving teachers out of the classroom. In fact, I just got an email from a teacher to review their letter of resignation that they want to put in today because of student behavior at one of our middle schools. These are real problems. So, one of the things I just passed is asking you to sign the petition, and the URL, you just have to type into the address, and if you want me to, I can send it to you electronically. And we're asking you to join on to our petition to ask our state legislators and our governor to fund public education. The next part of this that we're also talking about, quite frankly, you touched on a little bit in your, in your work session, which is the fact that everybody wants to take our, part of the money that they want to give you and put it into categoricals, which we looked at some of those, but they want to give it to our teachers, especially our classroom teachers, as bonuses. Bonuses that don't count towards FRS and don't go into their, into their salary structure over the long haul of time. The governor is now asking the House and Senate to consider putting back in the $400 million of bonus money that he had proposed in his budget. And I want to tell you, as we talk about needing mental health counselors and guidance counselors, and occupational therapists and physical therapists, and every time we have to bring in an outside provider to provide these things, that contracted service ends up costing us many times more than what we could if we could, could pay a wage that would attract these folks to come and stay in our district. But at the end of the day, the bonuses that are proposed are, leave out pre-K teachers, they tend to use the very static decision of what a classroom teacher is, and they leave out guidance, social workers, psychologists, you know, coaches, instructional coaches, district coaches, curriculum folk, because they're not classrooms, they're not, they're not sort of, they're not considered by, so a lot of people get left out. And then we have some of our teachers that frankly work with our most, our most difficult students, if you will, and so they get, they, some of them get a van, and they have worked miracles, but it's not enough to move that van, they get nothing. They get nothing for their work. And so that is problematic. And so why is it important to say, well, what does it do, and where does it come from? You know, it's not going to make a difference if we don't. So I want to pass around an article that came out, and it quotes actually Mr. Chris Latvala, who is the representative that chairs the House Pre-K and Twelve Appropriations Committee. And he, we are starting to make some inroads, so we need to keep up the pressure, about the fact that we need salary dollars, not bonus money. And so that's why we're asking, and actually, it talks about the fact in this article, "Teachers, school board members, superintendents, and others have urged both chambers to put money into annual salaries as we are struggling to maintain..."
This came out today? This is?
I think it came out yesterday.
Okay, sorry.
But anyway, it just shows that if we keep up the pressure, we may be able to impact still this session, and that we may be able to get folks to do what they need to do, which is give us the money and give us the local control to decide how best at a bargaining table to do these, to do these things. And in fact, in the article, Kelly Stargell herself says that it is not her decision where the money goes. And so she understands, obviously, in this, that it's a collective bargaining issue, then they need to stop sending us, taking our money, and paying a pittance on what we need to do to gain and retain the teachers and support staff that we need in our classrooms. And then the last thing I'm going to share with you is actually, since you talked about resolutions earlier, sorry, ma'am, is the fact that the Florida Education Association is asking schools, city councils, and town boards to sign on and pass a resolution, and if you'll give me a moment, I'm just going to quickly read it to you all since you just got it. "Whereas free public schools available to all students without exception are foundational to our democracy, and whereas all students, no matter where they live, deserve a high-quality public school that teach the whole child and provide them with well-rounded school experience that addresses their academic, social, and emotional needs. And whereas disinvestment has been the hallmark of the Florida state budget since the Great Recession, and our state still spends less on public education than it did when the recession started in 2017. Whereas real estate support, excuse me, whereas real state support for higher education has declined by 20%, tuition at four-year public institutions has skyrocketed by 60%. And whereas Florida has one of the largest economies in the nation, but is still in the bottom 10 states in per pupil spending and teacher pay, and whereas future educators are dropping out of colleges of education and choosing other careers, and whereas the Florida Department of Education is projecting that there will be more than 10,000 teacher vacancies throughout Florida, and whereas districts are also facing incredibly high turnover amongst their education staff, many students will not have qualified and committed, have a qualified and committed educator in front of them in the coming school year. Therefore, let it be resolved that hopefully, the Pope County School Board urged legislation, the legislature, to increase public school funding by $743 per student, and increase funding to Florida's colleges and universities, return decision-making and flexibility to local school districts, and the educators and parents who directly serve those students in the neighborhood community, in their neighborhood community schools, institute loan forgiveness for teachers, and pass laws to protect college students from predatory lending, and reduce the cost of teacher certification tests, stop linking student test scores and teacher evaluations, and redesign evaluations to align with teaching and learning." These are not unreasonable asks, quite frankly. I think these are all things that align with things that are in your legislative policies, things we've certainly talked about, but at some point, we have to start to step up and politically make real that this is what we expect. The people who go to Tallahassee, the men and women who choose to run for those positions just like you are there to serve for public good. They are not there to move political agendas, they are, they are there to listen to their constituents, and to make laws, and to pass budgets that help improve their communities back home. And in a place where we're now talking about a potential of this voucher program further destabilizing our local economy, I think that it's time for us to start to talk to our parents, our students, certainly who are of voting age, continue talking with our community people. We actually invited Jason and Mike Perone into our PEA meeting, they came to our board meeting, and they did their presentation at the last board meeting, so that we're all understanding of where we are. And while we can say thank you to the Senate that it's better, it is still not enough. And we are going to have to make very, very hard decisions down the road as the funding continues to not be adequate for the needs, and as they pass laws that have the potential to take not just millions, but billions of dollars out of public schools. Because at the end of the day, there will still be a public school system that is serving our students that may or may not be welcome into some of these charter and voucher private public schools. So I think that's kind of it in a nutshell. I, you know, I just want you to know that we hope that you'll join with us as, as we ask for the money and ask for the increase in the BSA. And while we may or may not get that much, certainly every amount of pressure we add in to the mix, as the, as the negotiation happens between the House and the Senate, the Senate seems to be standing stronger, because in the past, we've, we've moved always more towards the House's budget than the Senate. But we need to have, we need to have that Senate budget and more. So I hope you'll let me know if you'll be willing to sign the petition, and I hope you'll consider taking up the resolution, and I'll answer any questions you might have, and I tried to do it in 10 minutes, I don't know if I made it.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in and offering your thoughts, your concerns today. And, you know, the real challenge is that we're not having a discussion, we're not having a discussion with Tallahassee, and that's, that's the problem. You know, we have many of our legislators, or not all of them, who aren't reaching out and listening to the professionals and listening to the experts as relates to the challenges we face, so we're not talking about, we're not having a conversation, and that's the real, the real crime, I think, that we need, I think if we could get together and talk, we can, we can find ways to resolve those, those challenges.
It is, it is frustrating that they have heard over and over again, by the vast, vast majority of teachers, for example, that teachers do not want bonuses, they want salary, that they choose to continue down that path. And you're right, they're not, they're either not talking and/or not listening to what really the need is, and the need is real wages that will attract people to public education, not enough people are going into schools of education to fill our needs, and a lot of people, as you know, as the job market is robust, there are a lot of people vying for the same people that we're vying for to come into our classrooms. In a market-driven economy, it amazes me that teachers somehow are the only people that don't get the advantage of supply and demand, because by supply and demand, they should be making a million dollars a year.
Well, we shouldn't, we certainly shouldn't see a lack of teachers, right? We ought to be paying enough so that we'd be attracting them and not losing them.
One would hope.
I already signed the petition. Thank you, Capazello. You're welcome, and I'll be sharing that on every social media thing that I'm on.
I appreciate that.
Number one, and number two, the supply and demand, that is the truth, that, you know, what you just said. And I spent my three, six minutes with whoever, and I will say this out loud, Senator Lee, who was at our legislative, that, you know, talked about union busting and all the other stuff that the original intent in the 90s was of all this legislation, I met with him twice, and he is begging for boards. Ms. Miller, were you in that meeting?
With Senator Lee?
Yes. He is begging for boards to give him concrete information that he can use. His biggest fear is to go into and debate these types of things, and then somebody bring up something, and he'd get blindsided, and then nobody listened to him again. But I believe he is on our side. His kids attend public edu, public schools in Hillsborough County. You know, he's, I think we need to find our allies up there and provide them with what they're requesting, that's...
I agree, and in fact, some of them are, what they need is political shelter, as they take on their own, their own party, if you will, their own, their own leadership in these things, you know, it is, it is something for, it can be formidable. I know, you know, they're, they're human beings just like we are, it can be formidable to stand in the, in the breach of something that everybody believes is a done deal. And so I do think it does matter when we, when we give those people the political ammunition that they need to be able to fight.
If I may just tie onto that, he actually reiterated that it is perceived as whining that we don't get enough money. And that's kind of sometimes what the public hears, hears, is just about money, and they need, like, again, the talking points, the things that will, you know, we need to be us against them, is my line.
So the FEA did a...
Well, I think we need to be informing them.
Yes, that's what I mean.
Educate.
Educate. We, we do need to be educating, and it is important that we have this whole realm of people that we're silent on that are our allies, which is our parents and our communities, who don't maybe understand, but the more we get out there and the more that they can see, the more they become. Our state association, FEA, did a survey, and in fact, they oversampled to make sure that we were on right point, so they oversampled rural, they oversampled Republican, and by that meaning they asked, you know, in a, in a poll, they figure out they need X number of men, X number of Democrats, this many age group, blah, 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 and then they statistically can say, when they do their survey, it's valid. So we oversampled some of the people we, that, but overwhelmingly, people believe that teacher, teacher salaries are under, underperforming what they should be and need to be better, and that public schools, they believe in public education more than you might, you might believe, and we just need to help get them and garner them as our allies. And our legislators need to understand that, that our parents are being made aware of these things, and our, and our students are being made. And is there room to grow in public school? Absolutely. Are there things we need? But I'm telling you, and you're right, they use the term whining, but at the end of the day, the number of problems that we face, they, I've heard legislator after legislator say, well, we can't just throw money at it, and all I have to say to that is, try it just once. Try it just once. You've never tried it, so let's try that just once, and throw some damn money at it, and then we can see what would happen if we had enough guidance, if we had enough counselors, if we had enough teachers, if we were able to pay a wage that would attract and maintain people, if we could have enough money to be able to, to figure out programs for our ESE, our students, and our behaviorally challenged students. Try it, just once, please. Then, then after you've tried it and you can prove it doesn't work, then, then maybe you can say that. But we have been grossly underfunding our public schools, we have done amazing things in Pope County with the money that we've gotten, our teachers, you know, and the other thing I'll... Our teachers, you know, and the other thing, last thing I'll say, the amount that our teachers and support staff subsidize the school system is astonishing. It's billions of dollars across the country per year, billions where they buy paper and pencils and books and clothes for kids and food and shoes and, and I can bring you real people that could tell you this is what they did this year, you know, of how much they spend, $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 of their own money to do, no other profession is asked to do that.
Yeah, I mean, as someone who used to do tax work, I can attest to that because I saw the receipts they would bring in, you know, and of course, they can, they can under certain circumstances write those things off. But my point is that they, you're absolutely correct. The amount of money our teachers spend in subsidizing their students or providing for their students in the classrooms is amazing. Ms. Johnson, thank you so much for, for being here today and for your comments and your thoughts. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And I hope you'll consider the resolution.
Thank you.
Just one, one point about what, what Marianne is saying and as it relates to thanking people. You know, when the public hears us thank, our legislators are being awesome, what they hear is, oh, they're being awesome. Like, we can't both tell our, our public that we're being shortchanged and both say the people who are shortchanging us are awesome. Those things are conflicting and they confuse the public and the public gets confused by this stuff. Like, I think you can say, this is better, well done, in this case, but for a decade, you've put us in a place where, you know, you're pulling the knife out of our back a couple of inches. That's not really a reason to thank you yet. You know, take, take the knife out and heal us and then we'll, you know, then we'll talk. So I just think that whole question of thanking is, is important, not because of the legislators, but it's important because of what the public hears and they need to understand.
Okay. So, thank you, Ms. Johnson. So the next item on the agenda are the board protocols. This came out of our master board training and, and we need some, I think we want to have some discussion about this to, to determine how to move forward with it. What, what does that mean exactly and how would we like to see it implemented? And I think, Ms. Miller, you, would you like to lead us in that discussion or do you have some thoughts about it at least?
I just had gone back and, and talked to former board members on how things work and it's a different, I think you have a dynamic based on who's on the board and, and the needs at the time. But where we're at now, they've never been, I can't find a board that has operated like this. I even found the system that, you know, we've talked about implementing, has been used before. And I don't know how well it was used or if it wasn't, you know, I don't think all board members were using it. So if we're going to create a system for communication, we need to have everyone on the system using it for communication. It's not to be targeted to one or more board members to stop inquiring. I think that the public has shown by great margin, they want board members who ask questions. So we need to be able to do that and learn about what's happening. So we needed to figure out how to do that in the most professional and respectful way. There's not other boards that operate in the dark. They're not. Not city, not county. There's a level of professional trust and understanding where if a county commissioner runs into a city employee, they can say, hey, how's it going? How does this plant work? You know, how does that work with transportation of that truck? And, you know, not inquiring for them to produce a report on anything, but just inquiring. I have found another board that is operating like the current conversation at this one and it's, as a new board member, it is the biggest level of frustration that as a community member, I can learn or gain knowledge in a rapid pace compared as a board member. So we need to decide how we want to operate. Do we want to be slow with progress or do we really want to talk about protocols to make us efficient and professional and look at, you know, and for our staff to, you know, understand that we're engaged. So I guess that's, that's where I came when I sent that email. I mean, to talk to previous board members that say, yeah, I would get on the phone and ask transportation, you know, hey, I had a bus late or, you know, hey, how does that work? Or I would call, and I look at them and say, oh, that's not how we operate. You know, they're confused by that. And I'm talking board members up through the 90s and 80s, you know, where there was a different level of respect given to board members. We were, they were treated as elected officials and they behaved that way. And so the fact that we have to put any of this in writing, a little discouraging, but I'm glad that we're talking about it and we're, we're going to do it.
You mean, when you say put this in writing, you mean...
Like the protocols of emails should be returned. I asked the city commissioner, you know, like, how long does it take you to get an email back? Is it, do you have a protocol for that? No. The staff knows that if we send an email, we need, we need a response to it. You know, I get, I get my emails back. If I didn't, it would be an issue. Okay, thank you for that. You know, I don't, you know, and I go on to the next person. When you make a phone call to learn something, how do you do that? How do you ask? And other board members, through the Florida Board Association, boards do not have this problem. And there are boards that are very dysfunctional. You know what I mean? We are very functional. I think we have, I think, I'm pleasantly surprised how well we operate with, amongst, you know, the board meetings and how we conduct ourselves. It shouldn't be difficult to have a list of protocol on communication.
Yes, ma'am.
I kind of investigated that at my now third new school board member training and kind of spoke...
She wins the award for new school.
Does she?
I don't go, I don't want to do all that, so she does.
I have always been a front row Frida and I will continue to be.
She saves me a seat when I'm late and she's in the front row.
Front row, center.
There we go. Thank you, Tedra.
You're welcome.
Yes, because, you know, my job is to make us more efficient and functional, you know, that's what I, I think. And, you know, I understand Ms. Miller's concerns and I've spoken to big boards, especially Orange County because they had a huge turnover the same time I was elected. So we end up in the same kind of training things together. And so we talk, which I'm allowed to do with them, right, Mr. Bridges?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, you know, they don't, it's not a question in Orange County, like, but it also has common sense built and there is no policy that they know of. They simply, and that's more how I operate because a lot of these folks I knew before I sat here. So it's kind of awkward for me to get permission to talk to Sheila Keith, who I taught her son at Park Joe, it's awkward, you know, is what I'm going to say. When I just needed to ask her about something to do with a community member that I know we both know. Does that make sense?
Let me add a little bit of history. Is this being recorded?
Yeah. Follow me.
Just... So I know how to phrase my words.
You're going to have to rethink your phrasing.
I am. I understand some that you may have talked to and then there are others who you probably may not have talked to. The issue really is and has been all these years, as long as I've been on here, is that some individuals tend to ask the board, not the board, ask staff for loads of information that they in the past were not able to provide without spending countless hours and days researching, compiling, getting ready to present and on and on. And there came a time at which because of the leadership, it wasn't being addressed.
That's the key.
Right.
The leadership.
The leadership.
Yes.
That's exactly right. But it's very difficult for the leadership to talk to an elected official who supervises them to say, whoa, Lori, I can't do that. Are you kidding me?
I haven't had that problem. I've had the current leadership be very vocal in what they will or will not do.
But then they weren't.
Right.
This is not back then.
I know.
I feel like the second wife divorced.
I'm going to have to scout you here. We're going to have, we need to talk one at a time because they, because we need to keep minutes, so.
So all I'm saying is, yes, we should be able to get to a point, I understand you, where you can pick up the phone and call who you need to call within reason without, for knowledge, I would say anytime because everybody wants to know more. As I've told you before, when I got on the board, I didn't come from an educational background. So those anacronyms just about blew me, oh, what? I couldn't understand every third sentence because there was some acronym being used and I'm like, you know, I'd look, I'd go, hey, what does that, what does that mean? So yes, from a knowledge standpoint, you want that and you want that ability to do so. I just don't know, and I'm being honest, where the line is, not for you, in general, okay? In general, we set protocols and policies, it's not targeted at one person, it's just in general. Where's that line to where if I'm crossing it, are we going to respect or go, Lori, I'm sorry, I just, I can't do that. My staff is going to spend blah, 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 blah. And then will there be pushback? Will I go, yeah, but I asked you, you did it for so and so, now I'm asking. I don't know how that flows and I think that's part of all this background. I hate to say it. I know we're a new board, but she's experienced and they all have some of that from past or current board members. I don't know, I can't speak for the leadership. So I understand your frustration because I remember being in your seat and wanting those questions and I kind of went through the leadership because that's just my generation. That's how I was raised in leadership development, is you go through and so I would always end up going through and then that person would say, you know what, I don't know, give Tedra a call, she could help you with, but that way she knows that I asked the question, that I'm going to Tedra. Or you know what, like the Mr. Pitts thing, when I got the request for the community, I didn't know where to go, who would be the best person. I contacted her and she said, you know, why don't you give Mr. Prone or Mr. Pitts a call, let them know. So it's been kind of, at least for me, that way. So she kind of knows, wait, there's a community out there, they want to know about, you know, our funding, who's going to present, who's good at it? Because I didn't know that you'd been out there doing that at that time and then I looked. So from my perspective, I think it's just letting them know kind of what you're asking for. And then, yeah, you're right, I don't know what the protocol is by how many days or hours, you know what I'm saying? That you want a response. Normally, me and my professional business, you know, here or wherever, I try within 48 hours to answer somebody, hopefully beforehand, but sometimes if you're out of town or phones die or whatever, issues happen. So there should be some sort of, so that you don't feel frustrated. I don't know how to answer that because I'm not the leadership team, but I understand how you're feeling.
Ms. Porter?
Okay, so I'm going to give you a prime example of what I would not have understood to be a huge amount of time because in my mind, when I asked the question, I thought we already kept track of this.
Something.
Right, okay. So, and Joanne can verify this, I actually came in to speak with Superintendent Bird about that and she let me know via the email how much time it would take. So together, we were able to talk about that.
Right.
While I was sitting there and get another perspective on that. I said, well, then let's try this, which I still haven't gotten, but that's fine.
But it's not fine.
Well, no, I meant, because it's still going to take time and I understood that via our conversation. But I think my point is that I'm trying to make is that if it's not readily available, that should be a signal to somebody that quite possibly we need to be tracking that type of data. Does that make sense? That's really what I like to see out of that because to me, us tracking our employees and why they're leaving, and I thought it was part of our strategic plan in some pillar of, yeah, or we asked for it or something at the health clinic, did we not? When we sat and met, or our strategic plan, I thought it was something we already tracked. That's, you know, I would have loved to have been able to just walk over to Tedra because I'm here every day because this is my only job, okay? So I'd love to be able to walk over to HR and just pop my head in to Tedra and go, we don't track that, Tedra?
I cannot agree more.
And instead of all, does that make any sense, anybody besides me?
Yep.
Well, let me offer this, those are...
Just one point, I mean, we are, state law gives each of us unfettered, unannounced access to every school we have. It would be interesting to see if the Attorney General would say that applies to senior staff offices as well. I mean, I'm not, it's not something I'm interested in forcing necessarily, but why wouldn't it? I mean, they're overseeing, they're overseeing schools, they're, they're operating them. If we have unfettered, unannounced, complete access to any school where things, where the rubber meets the road, why wouldn't we have access to the people responsible for holding those schools accountable or directing them or supplying them or supporting them? You know, maybe that's, you know, if we have to come to that, maybe we come, 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 come to that someday. I think, certainly the spirit of that, I don't think any of us go and just walk up on schools in an unannounced way. We, it's not a productive visit, it's not, the same way we wouldn't go throw our way around, there's a certain level of built-in courtesy that comes that I think we would all show, do all show to staff as well. I mean, certainly there are times we have to ask difficult questions, but I got to tell you guys, I'm going to have a hard time, I'm going to have a hard time with your talent telling me that I don't need to know anything about operations when my name is right here on this audit. And there are 11 findings here. None of them said school board shouldn't have done this. This is on all of us. We're a collaborative team and if you go and you read the law, it talks about the relationship between the staff and the board. It's very, it's very, very, very interpretive. It's like all practical cooperation, the phrases are, all this mechanism that's been built, built up of stay in your lane and, you know, blah, blah, that the school board association feeds us is not remotely supported in stat, as you. I mean, it's just practices they've built. You know, I, so I think there's a lot of, my point is, there's a lot of freedom here and a lot of guidance in the state into what they expect board members to be doing. They expect board members to know about this. They expect board members to have free access to schools. Why wouldn't we have similar sort of access to operations? So that's my point.
And I was going to ask you as a chairman, because I'm trying to understand what it was like before I was here, before I knew these people that asked too many questions and got into, you know, whatever. The first thing I want to say is, it's almost, and maybe I'm taking it a little too personally, but there is not another elected board that is treated this way by staff and the person they, you know, like this is not the culture, you know, and maybe that's the thing, it's different. School board's different. They don't look at our teachers as professionals like they look at others. Maybe it kind of just trickled down to us where we are not considered in the same capacity, which we definitely are and some of our oversight is the budget's larger than these city municipalities. But my question is, as a chairman, if there is something that comes up, we have a board member that's stepping out of bounds and asking for reports or asking for, you know, personal information or whatever, the out of bounds things that were happening, would it be the chairman that could say something or, I don't, like to somehow relieve that? I don't, I don't know, but to pay for things 15 and 20 years old, it's not helping us operate and we don't, it's not looked at by the community. Because when I say that to people, oh, I'm sorry, you know, can't, you know, they look at me like very confused and it is confusing. And so I would rather the culture be a little more professional and our, and our view from our constituents is that we're actually, you know, operating in a capacity where we were elected to operate. And that's not overstepping our boundaries, that's not asking for anything outside of information.
And I want to respond to that just very quickly. Honestly, I wasn't, it's important we have the conversations, right? That's where it starts and so it's important, it's good for me to have this conversation so I have an understanding of what's going on and I think, I think I do have a much better understanding now and I have some ideas I'll share with Mr. Bridges. But I, let me, I just want to offer one thing. I'm incredibly sensitive to what y'all are saying. I agree, I'm fully with that, but I would like to offer this. This is one experience I had a number of years ago, I think I might have shared this previously. I had a board member approach me, I was a staff member and they wanted information, they wanted it that day and I said, I can't, I can't do it that quickly. I can get it for you tomorrow. Almost cost me my job. The president of the organization came, sought me out and said, hey, Lynn, this, everywhere I go, I've been to several places now, they can get this information for us in 15 minutes. How come you can't have it now? And my response was, that's because they've been, it's information they've been accumulating, it's information they've been reporting on, it's information that they have been routinely doing. I don't have that set up in my system, nobody's ever asked for it before. So it's, you know, for whatever reason, it wasn't, it wasn't my fault that this organization hadn't, had not been asking for that information. But I had to go pull that from a number of different places, put it together, then I had to validate all of it, then I had to go back and build a file and it's because somebody's going to come back later and say, hey, you gave us this information, where did you get it from? And I've got to be able to document that. So it was, it was a rather lengthy process for me and I would have loved to have given it to him that day, I just simply could not. I just simply could not. So it was, that was a really difficult time. And I know even then, the president of the organization was a little bit, was more than frustrated with me because I couldn't do that very quickly. But we'd never done that before. So I, I had to go get those bits and pieces from other places. And then I had, then I had to validate all the information. Then I had to build a file. And so I couldn't just pull it and then give it to somebody. Because if somebody asks me, "Where did you get that?", I've got to be able to say, "Here's where it came from." So, so those are some challenges that we may be facing. And I'm not making, I'm not, I don't want to make excuses. I'm not saying that, but those could be some challenges that we face.
Well, I think your key in that story is leadership. I don't feel like Mrs. Bird would ever threaten a staff member with their job because they couldn't produce... Or I don't think the leadership we have would make that impact to a staff member because they couldn't fulfill a request. They would come to us and say, "The request is going to take this amount of time, we can't do it. The staff members explained that to you. I'm confirming that it is going to take that kind of time." It's about culture, it's about, it's what we want to operate as. I don't, I don't believe, I believe that Mrs. Bird, as a superintendent, would not have that kind of recourse on staff. I think it's, it would more than likely be opposite. Like, why are you asking for, you know, eight hours' worth of work? It has to do with leadership. And I think that we have a leader that would respect the staff's input on what they can and can't do.
Yeah, and I hear that, I do, I'm hearing that. Yes, sir.
Well, I just, I mean, there was a time, about a year ago now, where, let's be very, very honest, the board, 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 board superintendent called, called, called me out for asking questions. I think every one of those questions was completely legitimate and fair, and were vital to have answered. We had it publicly discussed. The world survives. You know, I mean, I think it becomes kind of a feeling of the board, and then we, and then the board members who most objected were gone. And, you know, to some extent, it becomes a political question. It becomes a, you know, if somebody's saying, "Give my cousin a job right now, bang, 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 bang", you bring, you bring that up in a board meeting, and that's going to get shut down pretty fast. If it's, you don't want to answer the question I'm asking because it's really embarrassing, or it makes you look bad, or it's, or there might be some dysfunction, then that's a different issue, and the, and the board can adjudicate that. I mean, for my point of view, I had absolutely no problem with somebody saying they were unhappy with the questions I was asking, because I'm quite capable of defending them, you know, myself. And I think that's the best place for that, to play out. Like, you know, like, if there's a good argument for why one of us is being unreasonable, Eric. You know, my thing, I've said to people forever, "I don't have time at this moment, can I get back to you?" Or, "Or I really don't feel comfortable talking about that with you", are always acceptable answers to me. I will go away and figure out what, I'll figure out what the next step is. I don't, I don't know why that's not an easy standard for board members to follow.
I think we need to figure out what we want and ask for. A lot of lying. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I don't know what everybody's not getting. Me, and maybe, you know, Mr. Hill is here, taking notes, or was.
Can I, can I suggest an idea for structuring this? Like, within the framework of what I think the, the... Because I missed the little discussion we had last meeting. But, so it's going to be like a log, right? That's, that's the idea, is that things get logged? Like, the requests get logged?
If everyone uses it.
Well, let's, let's assume for a moment they do.
Okay.
All right. So you break it up, and I think I talked about this last thing. You break it up for requests for information. Like, and that, that request is filed, you know. Lisa Miller asked for this information, and it's dated in a place where you can see it, where I can see it, where... But, I mean, I assume we'll all see them, right? Where this is going to be... So if somebody messes around for three, three weeks on something you asked for, we're going to see the date. I mean, it'll be active or fulfilled. You know, and, and I think you could do another category that's like, just, you know, request for something simple, a simple answer. Who's the principal of that school? You know, we wouldn't ask that. But, but, like, something of that scale. You know, minor, minor...
Go to the website.
Thanks, John.
Go to the website.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Ruth. I'm sorry.
No, no, I appreciate that. Anyway, minor, easily fulfilled request. That, on its face, is easy. It's an easy answer for somebody if you get the right, the right person. Then you have a request for information. Then you have a request for conversation. Whereas, I want to be able to sit down, and I keep coming back to this with Tedra. I would have loved to have had the discussion about the system, the tracking system, your implementing. If there is any, there is... Everybody in this building, in this system, knew something like that was important to me. I mean, there's no way you didn't. I mean, and why not just talk to me about it? Like, it's, I... Let me have my questions answered, and ask you questions. And then I can go talk about it. Then I can say, "Look, we've got this cool thing we're in place." I can't go talk about things if I don't know about them. I can't talk to the public about these things if I don't know about them, if I don't have access to them. And, you know, I would love to be able to have these conversations informally, but if I feel like, and quite frankly, I do have them with plenty of staff, informally. But, you know, for those who are a little less inclined, perhaps we have a conversation request. I would like to have a phone call with Rob to go through several concerns about transportation that I have. So it's like a three, three-part. Simple information, and I would love for the simple information thing just to be scrapped, that we can just be human beings to each other and just do it. But, so maybe it's just request for information, request for conversation.
And I think in that light, to the extent that we're asking questions, I completely agree. I think where we may cross the line is when we start then issuing directives. I'm not saying anyone here is doing that. I'm just saying, I think that's where it crosses the line. When you say, where we even suggest that somebody should be doing something differently, even if it's not in the form of a directive, just a suggestion. Even that may be, because I don't think that staff oftentimes understand a suggestion as a suggestion. I think they may interpret that as a directive. So we have to be very careful not to do that, I think.
Can we direct them to conform to the, to the...
To the audit?
To the state audit? That's their directive to conform? I mean, like, I mean, like...
We certainly can do that in a public forum, of course. But I'm just saying, personally, one-on-one.
No, I'm not interested in giving anybody any, any directives.
And I think that, to your point of simple questions, to put a third party involved to decide where my question needs to be asked, when I probably know more than the person trying to figure out where to send my question. Like, I would talk to a parent. Parent needs to talk to the middle school. Needs to follow the chain of command. She needs to talk to this regional person or this person. Instead of just sending, "Hey, you know, there is forward this email. These people are calling, these people are asking these questions. Can you follow up with them, please?" I'll send the request. It'll get forwarded to someone. They'll call the parent back, wrong person, not the right place. We'll get somebody else to call you back. We just look in, we just, you want to look confident. You want to look like, yes, I know who the regi... I looked on the website, I know who the regional superintendent is. You know, or whoever it is. This is who, this is the principal, and this is who you call. But I had it, I had it come up a couple of days ago, where the person said, "Nobody's to return my call, nobody's returned my call." Okay, we finally got a hold of her, but we sent the wrong person to call her. She wasn't asking for that. She was asking for B, not A, not B. And it just, a week to two weeks for a simple answer. You know what I mean? Or a conversation to generate that for a constituent who's looking at me to answer the question today. You know what I mean? So it just becomes, it's almost, it's comical. And I hate to say it, but it is.
But you're right, there has to be a third category because constituents serve, serve this too.
Right.
Like, there's, there's like requests for information, stuff we want to know.
High priority.
Constituents, because constituents are stuff we're hearing that needs to be reported and dealt with. And then, and then conversation request. That would be my suggestion of how we structure that. And if we date it, I mean, at least it creates pressure to... Like, if it's, if it's in a centralized location, it creates a reminder and pressure for people. I mean, what do you guys think about that?
No, may I add the idea? And I think, I think what all I was trying to do a few minutes ago is put some parameters on it in saying, as we do this, if we stay away from the directives. But, Mr. Hill, you had some comments?
Well, I got two. First of all, I'm going to have to leave. I've got a meeting to get to. The staff, there'll be some staff that will remain here. And, you know, in regards to the conversation about communication, certainly trying to always improve communication is very important for all organizations. And I think the system that we're looking at, one of the things that is very valuable is to try to increase efficiency of getting information out to the, to the right people, and then have somebody that's on point to make sure it gets where it needs to go quickly and efficiently. And let me give you one example. It happens with our staff. And it happens sometimes with various emails. You'll get an email, and there's six people copied on it, and you're one of the six, and you're trying to figure out who's responsible for this, who's actually on point taking care of it. And so one of the things this system might do, or in whatever tweaks that the board will recommend, will help increase that efficiency.
Can I point something out? The reason you get six people copied on emails is that we've been told to copy Joanne?
Yep.
I'm not, I'm just talking in general.
I generally know who can answer the question.
Okay.
Can someone...
I'm just talking in general.
Can someone, who was here in the past, give reference to when the system was implemented originally? Why it didn't work, or how long it worked, or what the issues were with it? It was before you.
Well, not really.
Oh, you had, okay, it was here.
Not really. So we, I, and I'm going to share my views on it. Ms. Cunningham will have some additional views on. I've heard over the years that there has been significant interference with staff. And it occurred while I was here.
But using this system? This system has been implemented before.
Well, I think, you may have, based on listening to what you've said, you may have some ideas about that system that I... We're not sure it's going to play out that way yet. I, I understand your greatest concern is that some people won't use it.
Well, that's, I mean, that's what I've been told last, from the previous board members. There was a system put in place probably to deal with board members who had too many questions or too intensive questions. But it was, everyone was to use it, it wasn't being used. People were just, you know, kind of doing their own thing with the relationships they've made. The one board member probably was filtering those questions through that system. So I don't know, I mean, so when it, when it's reintroduced, it's almost like, okay, we're trying to handle this again. So I don't, you know, if someone was here that could, that could give...
Well, I think that tool wasn't properly used before. So now we have to find out how to properly use it. But there are two separate and distinct issues. One, one issue has to do, in my opinion, with individuals who are asking questions that really have nothing to do with their job as a role, as a board member. They're asking questions that are completely...
Is that happening?
No, not, well, I don't know. I don't know, because I'm not a superintendent. But I'm just saying it happened.
A decade ago.
It happened. And then you have issues where, and this is, I think, the bigger concern, where folks are issuing directives. And maybe it's not, maybe they don't feel like it's a directive. Maybe they feel like it's a suggestion. You should be doing this a different way. That's going to be construed as a directive. And again, I don't know that's happening now. Let me be clear about that. What I'm saying is, it has, it has happened since I've been on the board.
Okay.
And I think it has been a problem in the past. Where, where, you know, folks are elected, they don't really fully understand what it means to be a board member. So they're, they feel like they have the authority to issue directives. And when somebody says, "Hey, you know, you shouldn't be doing that", then they turn it into a suggestion, which has the same effect.
Right.
So that's, I think, what we're trying to avoid. And...
Well, then call it out when it happens.
Right.
Bring it, bring it, I mean, bring it out and talk about it.
Yeah, I may be able to shed some light, not, from a 30,000-foot view. And that is, I think it is cyclical. We've seen, this is, this is not the first time this has arisen. It's something that, over time, you know, you'll start out with a, with a system in place where everybody understands what the roles are. And over time, those lines get blurred. And then a new superintendent comes in and says, "No, we're going to put this rule back into place." But I think that Mr. Wilson also really put his finger on it. There's a fine line where requesting information bleeds into directing, directing staff. Not least of which, when you have the perception that a staff member is being directed to drop what they're doing and produce information. So superintendents tend to be kind of sensitive to that. Historically, there's always a little bit of friction where the duties and responsibilities of the superintendent rub up against the duties and responsibilities of the board that are set out in Chapter 1,001. If you haven't, you've probably looked at that, and I know that you've had references to it in training all the time. But I'll, I'll send you the link so that you can look at those provisions directly.
Yeah, we are way on the other side of what I would say, so...
But what I'm, what I suggest to you is that superintendents and boards typically tend to view those things tend to view those things in a way that overlap.
Yeah, agreed.
And, and so, so this, this is not a recent phenomenon. This is something that happens periodically as a superintendent says, okay, we bled too far over onto one side, we need to pull it back. So, it.
I think it's a leadership thing. I think if you talk to a city manager that can talk to a board member and say, you know what, you're asking for this information, you need to come run it through me or whatever. I think it's a leadership thing. So, instead of saying, you shall not ever, it should be when you cross the line, if a staff member feels like this is too much, they're gonna afford it to me.
Right.
And then I will address it. And I don't know if the chairman can take that leadership role, or if it needs to be the superintendent's leadership role, or they need to share that role. But it cannot be, the current way we operate is just not efficient. And it's not, the perception of the public is that we're not even trusted amongst our own people, which is not what we want them to perceive. We need to act as professionals.
Do, do you perceive it as a policy issue where it's something where we need to, we have a policy that articulates globally how, how this is supposed to look. If, if it's dissatisfaction with the policy, then we can address the policy.
Our policy is left to interpret. Our policy is, I don't think we need to write policy. I don't know any other body that writes policy about professional communication. If we do, I mean, that would, we could, but I think we should have an understanding. I just don't, the culture needs to, it needs to be an understanding of professionals working together. It is not us versus the super. It's not us versus the chairman. It's not us versus, you know, it's, we are one unit.
So, what, what will help you? I'm still not there. Is it because you have to go through her?
No.
To get a response?
No. And I don't even, I don't even know who I'm going to. I'm, I've copied 16 people. Like, you know, I have to copy both secretaries. And, you know, if it's something I'm asking for at the time, if I'm saying, you know, a product of something, a tangible item, I would never go directly to a staff person. But if I went to, okay, perfect example. The Office of Innovation is relatively new to me and how the academy's run. I should be able to call Steve and say, you know what, I have a lot of parents interested. Tell me, you know, about this, or who can I talk to in your department that can give me all the information on grade recovery for people at CFAA? Or, you know, like these kinds of things. It shouldn't be a weak process with a link the secretary had to send me. It should be building relationships with our staff. You know, who, can I come to one of your meetings? Can I learn about it? And I did have a hallway conversation with someone and they invited me to like one of their meetings. And I learned a great deal of things.
Sure.
And that, having those opportunities.
What, 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 what would be, what would mean more than any policy, any stretch, I'm sure, is if Jack, if he walked, walked, walked in here and said, you guys have my blessing to, to talk to my staff. Please don't abuse that. Take it ser, seriously. If they, if they tell, tell, tell you they're too, too busy, respect that. If you get, if you put them in a place where they're uncomfortable, I'm gonna expect them to tell me. And I'm gonna raise a pot publicly or, or publicly. If Jackie walked in here right now and said, 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 said that, this'll be done.
And you feel like if you called the teacher, the teacher could say, Billy, that is too much. I cannot get to you. Okay?
Or it's private. I can't share.
Right.
And there's so many ways to get that out. I mean, like, if I abuse, abuse that.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
I mean, Kay's gonna hold me accountable. Lynn's gonna hold, you're gonna hold, all you guys are gonna hold.
Cause you're ruining it for the rest of us.
Right, right. There's a, there's an element of, of just basic peer, peer pressure in it. And, and, you know, it doesn't have to be written down. I mean, I, I mean, I think the log would actually be helpful because it's easy to forget emails. There's a lot of stuff coming, coming in.
There is.
You know, I mean, I, I think a log could be, especially for like, you know, specific requests and also for, for constituent service. But I think that's a different issue than, than just the basic idea of.
Yeah, I didn't get it. I didn't get that.
I mean, so, do, do, do you hear what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I agree.
I mean, if I was superintendent, and God forbid, I, that's exactly what I would do. I would walk in here and say, every one of you guys has my blessing to talk to my staff in a productive way.
Right. Just don't abuse it.
If you're learning, learning something, if you abuse it, if you put pressure on them, I'm gonna embarrass you.
Or if you say negative.
Right.
You'll just be held accountable.
Right, right. Well, yeah, I, I, I like to be clear.
Okay, now, right. And people who've created relationships, like Lori has created relationships. You've been here a lot longer. It's a diff, you have a different perspective because you run into people I don't know. I still have to look online and write down all my principals' names and figure out who's in what department. So, it's a different perspective than someone who's new.
I understand. No, going back to how it was for me. I mean, no, I agree with you totally. And I think, you know, it's a new day in Polk County. I mean, I get that. And it's just a question of, you know, you may be having a very frank conversation. And we try it. So, we try it for what, six, I, I don't know. You can try. Say, for her to basically come in here and say, have that, cause I understand the frustration when you're new and you're just trying to learn. And it was different when I got on the board. Cause you could do that. Actually, I didn't even know who was who. So, they would reach out to me and say, hey, do you wanna?
Isn't that great?
And learn a little bit about, you know, budgeting. I can remember thinking, oh, Lord, wow, you know?
They did that.
Huh?
We did that.
Well, you met the heads of the department.
You did.
But she's saying, there are people.
I was gonna make sure she understood that they did reach out.
They did reach out to, to try to get everybody. Okay, all right.
We did the one introduction. But do you, but do you think that we would get those people still feel comfortable enough to reach out and say, hey, we're having a meeting. Would you like to come? I don't, I don't feel they, they feel comfortable doing that at this point.
Well, I know.
Well, and this is enormously dynamic organization. Things are happening all the time that, that, that we're on the hook for. I mean, it's, it's hard to do our jobs if, if we don't have the ability to understand what's going, going on. You know, and so, it's, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, if you, if you said, if you said to me, look, if you, if you abuse my staff, we're gonna have a conversation. That would get my attention. If you say, you abused my staff, I'm gonna embarrass you. I would say, game on.
Good for Lynn.
All right.
But even our charter, even our charter boards, and I, I mean, that's a big, you know, nobody likes to talk about charter. But McKeel, I've talked to McKeel and I've talked to, they're, you know, they're appointed board members. And, and McKeel has appointed other public officials onto that board. They do not operate, like, they do not operate in the dark. They want them to know what's going on. So, they make good decisions about that budget and about their staff. But, so we can cross, I mean, I've yet to find someone in an organized setting like this that operates completely without understanding the systems and not able to reach out and understand things.
So, for you, it's.
It's so important.
It's informational than saying, oh, wait a minute, you know, how many of these do you do a week?
Yeah, and I guess we can't do any, we're not here to do.
No way.
But that's.
I'll.
To say it, because people are human. And they've been, been staff in this room. And my witness has been basically yelled at and scorned and made to feel, so, there has to be, as you said, we're professionals. But I can't tell you that everybody that's come before you has been that way in relationship to our staff. And it's taken many years for them to actually like to come and present in front of us versus sitting there and thinking, oh goodness, who's gonna tell me that I'm stupid? And that was the dumbest report I've ever seen? And how could you have put, no, I'm, I'm telling.
Oh, I've heard stories.
Okay. And they're not good. So, I think there's a little bit of that caution. So, it's like, hey, run stuff through her. She can send it, whatever. And I'll be honest with you. You know, we had a private discussion. So, I'm not gonna get into it. At our last school board, what was it called? The, the training.
The retreat.
School board retreat.
Yeah, no, the.
No, the board, the training.
Master board training.
Master board training. You know how we had that? And I'm gonna tell you, for the issues that I had, I've seen it, a huge improvement in the communication with me and my constituents. So, I will say that over the last, whatever it's been, six weeks.
And, and it starts with the conversation. You have to have the conversation.
You have to have the conversation.
And I'm, I'm, I'm hearing it. And so, I'm, I'm gonna work on it. It's not gonna fall through the cracks. Ms. Fortney?
Well, we're gonna go back to stay in your lane from the Florida School Board Association. Ugh, you know, so this may be out of my lane and, Lord, help me.
We're gonna put you back in your lane now. Come on.
Yeah. But, you know, I'm gonna, there are numerous folks down here. And I, I think this might be why I don't show as much frustration as some other folks. Because I've already built those relationships over 30-plus years. So, and, and I'm gonna go back to the word awkward, to follow that protocol when I know right where his office is or her office is. And I, I go by and leave a sticky note there. And then I get a response. That, that's not fair to you, I know. But.
Well, you know everyone. We're in Tallahassee, make a corner, and here comes a legislative aide, Ms. Fortney. So, yeah, none of us are gonna have that kind of, you know, advantage.
Also, I've said this before, I'm not keeping score. If, 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 if you're well-informed, good. I am not worried about that at all.
Right. But I can see where the folks that I don't know how that would be.
How frustrating.
Yes. So, it wouldn't.
It's terrible.
I mean, I'm simply here to solve problems.
Right, right. And I'm glad you have those relationships because you can, you can get that information.
It's helpful.
So, you have some ideas about what we should do with this new software we're implementing as, as Mr. Townsend. So, I would ask both of you to please share those with the superintendent.
Okay.
And.
I don't, I mean, I, I didn't get to see it. I wasn't here for that. But I do have ideas of how we should.
The most important piece of it is that everybody use it and not circumvent it, right?
Right, right.
So, you should share that with her. And, and I will too. I mean, I'll schedule some time to meet with her.
And she may not know. She might not have been here. I don't know that she was here when it was used before.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know. And then you had some ideas about how to structure.
Yeah, about, about how to structure a law. So, 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 so some of the issues about how long things take or whatever, or at least clear. And, look, it's, they're, they're busy. Stuff falls through the cracks. You get it. You know, I mean, it's, it's, and this, having it, everything in a central place would probably be helpful, particularly if it's in the framework of an overall change in attitude about how we, we collaborate. I mean, I've been thinking about this a lot. I, I think we're in kind of a productive state of creative tension right now with, with, with the board and staff. I mean, I, I think, I think there's a lot of push and, and it's, it's, it's good. It's like they're listening, stuff's happening. But we're not at creative collaboration yet. And I would love to see us move from productive creative tension to productive creative collaboration. And, and I think we can do, can do that.
Okay. So, Ms. Worthington, would you please add board protocols to our next roundtable meeting? And we'll, we'll continue to have this discussion and, and work forward with this? If that's.
And I think the only other piece on that creative program, that it's not gonna be the sole, if I call and they say, well, you called to find out which way to turn, you know, to find the cafeteria in that high school instead of sending an email.
Right, it has to be caps of the attitude.
It cannot, it has to be, this is going to be used for requests. Feel free to learn about our system that you govern. Like, that should be.
Exactly.
Learn about the system that you govern. Because that's what we do. I mean, with these budgets, how am I, until I walk through some of these, which no one had, I took poor Susan and made her give me a tour of this place. And I'm walking through offices not realizing how many people were there and then asking them what they did. The people, the architecture, like, I had no idea that Angela Usher ran that kind of system down there. I wouldn't have known that. You know, and it's better that I had the opportunity and I got to learn and meet with, you know. So, that's what I'm asking, to learn about the system that I'm supposed to be governing with, along with my fellow board members and attorney.
Amen.
Yes.
The next item on our agenda, so we're, we're gonna continue to talk about it. We continue to put this on, the next item on the agenda is the elopement plan. And Ms. Miller, that yours is this year?
It's me again. Sorry. So, there was a House bill that didn't make it. And it, I don't know that it's completely dead, but it more than likely is. And I'll tell you, I could tell you my opinion as to why. It has to do with partisan politics. So, I won't. But some of our delegation kind of said, the response when I would talk to our delegation members was, yeah, I saw that. That was brought up by the other party. You know, it's not kind of, it's not a, it's not a priority right now. There is some bipartisan stuff with it. But you should have that anyway. Everybody, every office, you should have that anyway. The district should have an elopement plan. Or you should have some kind of plan. So, for people that don't understand, Dr. Stanky's here. She could talk to you about kids who elope. Most of our schools, our elementary schools have elopement plans. They have to. Because that's where you find a lot of the kids eloping. But I have pages. And some, somebody in the community asked for more information. Do you not know what elopement means?
Well, I, I do. But will you say what elopement is real quick for, for everybody?
Oh, it's leaving. So, when students are either, they can run out of the school, they can run out of where they're supposed to be. So, they're, they're, they're fleeing where they should have been. And I sent you one story, you know, that, the one that really got to me was the student out of a high school who did not have an elopement plan, who walked two miles away from the school. And the SRO's response, this is a non-verbal child walked out of a, walked out of a gym. And the, there was no plan. 15 minutes where they knew it was gone. SRO went to the parent's house and knocked on the door. Is your son home? And the mom almost had a heart attack in the, in the doorway. A church called us and said, you know this kid? We got his name out of him. He's very limited verbal skills. And so, the student had walked a major highway without injury, two miles down the road till somebody found him. And that's one of many. Somebody sent me pages of stories. I will not read you because, but there are issues with elopement. Hillsborough County years ago had a child die who left a gymnasium, climbed a fence and drowned.
Drowned.
They also, we have not learned from other counties, other situations that we are dealing with currently. I don't want to wait for legislation. I think that we should, I'll read you what the House bill was supposed to be. Pretty much, it was, it was to require for public schools in Florida to document when a child elopes. Because right now, they don't have to document it. And it was to require an elopement plan for the district, which could just be each school will have an elopement plan as part of their team, their response team. And I think the need is mainly in middle school and high school. To wait till a child elopes the first time, to write a behavior plan or put it into an IEP might be the first time that we lose, we lose a kid from elopement. So, my question is to the board, is it something that's a priority that you think, you might have thought we already had it? You might have not realized we have to deal with children that, that walk off campuses? Is that, if that's something maybe Ms. Fortney has experienced in, if that's a priority to do as a, at the district level, this bill will come back around. It'll come back next year and it might make it. So, can we please be proactive in creating policy to be, for safety reasons?
So, Dr. Stanky, can I ask you a question? Is that something that typically would be done by each school or, or by the district as a, as a whole?
Our current district-wide critical, critical response, critical incident response plan includes directions and protocols for when students are missing, abducted, lost, whatever. So, which would include a student who may elope. Because walking off campus because you're upset, or missing from a field trip or something like that, of course, is different than a student with a disability who might elope because of that, they're escaping whatever demands are placed on them. So, our district-wide.
Were you aware of that plan?
We do, yeah. So, not all schools.
So, our district-wide plan covers that. As far as, you know, what a school should do if a student goes missing. Individual student plans with IEPs, they have a plan, what's called a plan of supervision. That's the document that outlines for that individual student, this is what you do when Billy goes running off because he's upset about something. He escapes the school board meeting because he's, you know, whatever.
Not, not really.
He's wild.
Some other.
Wild Bill.
You know.
Wild Bill.
This is what sets him off. This is what might cause for him to do it. This is how you, you know, rein you back in. Do they need to be restrained? You know, different things like that. So, that plan of supervision will do for a student with, with the IEP. We don't have anything currently that will require individual schools to do on a schoolwide level just for their school. From what I understand of the legislation and some other districts that have them and then some, we have lots of other districts that don't do this. They require conversation with law enforcement and other community, you know, whoever's around their school to go out and do perimeter plans. You know, you have to involve the community and all that. And that's what those school-level plans are looking like in other districts. So, we don't do that right now.
We do have school, I had a couple of school facilitators email me their school plan.
Well, they might have done it on their own.
Okay.
But we, we don't have anything that I know of that says you need to develop this type of elopement plan at your individual school. And I've checked with different departments and.
Is, is there value in having a set of standards for how you manage, like, depending on each school's a little, little different, each school sits, I mean, is, is that what you're talking, talking about?
I think so.
Having sort of like seven bullet, bullet points, here's what to do if.
And some of our schools have great ones. The ones I've seen, I thought were great. But the calling 911 is part of that, I think, part of that legislation to call law enforcement because these kids that are eloping off campus, they're trying to prevent death. I mean, that kid could have walked down traffic and we would've been, we currently pay for a GPS device to be on him so we can track him. My fear is the kid that we don't know elopes and leaves. And we have a lot of water around a lot of our schools. So, I think.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah. And so, I think, the calling 911, they should have called 911 to put an SR in a car and drive to the parent's house because they think they might have walked home. He didn't have the cognitive, cognitive ability to find his home.
Right. So, but in terms, so in terms of, I'm sorry, I mean.
That's okay.
So, but what I think I'm, I'm, I'm hearing is rather than like a 16-page plan that everybody will sit on a shelf and not look at, you need like three or four.
One-page book with bullets, right?
Important bullets. Like, here's what you do. If, and, and I think we could benefit from that kind of thing in a whole lot of areas. I mean, I mean, I'm certainly on board with doing it for elopement. But like, like that's a, you know, some, some, sometimes how to act gets buried by our policies. You know, our policies are, are operating. So, I would, you know, I mean, I'm very supportive of that in general. But, I mean, specifically, but generally, I think we could do that for a lot of other things too.
And currently, they don't have to report elopements. Is that true? Because I have parents saying, the school will say, your kid eloped, you know, 15 times. And they have, but they don't know. So, they're not recording, you know, especially for the young kids. You know what I mean? I don't, I don't know if it's because it's too many. Are they having to record when the students are eloping?
Record or report? Record, yes, they absolutely should be doing on their school level. But we don't have anything district-wide that requires them to report it to us.
But they have to record.
They have to record, right?
Well, because it's, that's a part of maintaining a student safe, whether they're disabled or not. I mean.
I don't know that their schools are recording.
Yeah. Cause I can tell.
Documenting, I guess it's the, it's the term maybe that we're using. And then.
I know we had an eloper slash runner that if we recorded every single time and you knew who I'm talking about.
Yes.
That's all we'd have done all day.
And, and that's, that's the type of, if, you know, if we were to look at doing something like this, those are the kinds of issues that we would have to be, be very specific and iron out.
Yes.
Because if we're talking about, I, I guess in my personal opinion, the term elopement typically refers to students who have an established pattern of doing it based on their behaviors and, and different things. If you're talking about the kid that just one day is out at PE and teacher, you know, miscounts how many kids are coming in, all of a sudden, somebody's missing.
Yeah.
That's a different issue, you know, that's.
Yeah, no, I, I think the intent to leave, like, these students, and some of, I'm gonna copy and paste without the student's names, some of these. But for a parent, you know, some of this stuff is shocking. And you probably don't even know about it because it's not being reported up to the district. But my, I, I've sat too, too long and watched us react to some really serious and tragic things that I think we need to have a set policy, a very simple, you know, this is what you do, this is who you call, you know, to prevent hopefully, you know, a tragedy. Like, because it could easily happen. Those, those, these kids can get over those fences quick. And I've watched them do it if they're trying to leave. And so, and that's how Hillsborough County, she climbed a fence and went to a pond. And that, that's our, I mean, that's a lot of our schools' retention plans.
Lisa, we had one a couple of years ago who had a skateboard. Like, that's what, that's how he took out.
Okay, so.
We were never gonna catch him.
And I would just wanna understand how that would be different than what our critical response plan requires now for a district for a student that leaves campus or.
I'll share with, I'll send the board and I'll share with you the protocols that I've received from certain schools and their cluster ESE schools. And that might have been a difference too. They have code, I mean, one school has a code they call. I mean, they have very specific things. But for a high school to not have, have anything, you know, that, that was very worrisome to me. Most of these stories are young elementarys. And I think the elementary schools are prepared, but those high schools, like that, I just drove down that busy road in front of George Jenkins, it was years ago, it was in the paper. But if you, but if you drive down that road, all I could think of is a kid, a low cognitive ability, nonverbal skill, could have been hit by a car, and somebody was watching out because he made it two miles down the road. And the poor people at the school, I'm sure, were in panic, but there was no, nothing to follow for them to do. And the SRO probably did the only thing he knew to do. So, I think saying, even if we said, every school will have a plan, we might have already something to call it, but you will respond to elopement with these procedures, it would be something.
And, so, if you don't mind, if you would send the superintendent what your thoughts are about elopement, so she has some idea. And of course, every board member's welcome to meet with her, but I'll meet with her and share some of what I've heard here today as well, and have her address it, come back with some thoughts in the next meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah. That's more than I, you know, this was just to discuss that we have issues with children, that I don't want to see a tragedy, yeah.
I believe I was sitting at the, I believe it was the Senate, it was a Senate bill, I believe I was in that discussion up there, you know, watching. So, exactly what didn't pass that should have passed, can you summarize for me a little bit?
Well, the house bill didn't.
Or what didn't pass that shouldn't have passed?
It's not done, but the house bill...
For your, for me, what do you see would be?
You don't want me to give you, well, it's the entire bill wasn't.
Right, but what part of it?
Oh, it, okay, Senate Bill 183 is the number. And it would have a recording feature to it, I'm not reading it directly. And, hold on, let me get a better summary of it, just so you have an issue, let me say, just so you can have a reference. It had to do with response and recording of, and you know, had to do with response and recording of children eloping, and that each district would have its own plan. But I'll read it to you.
So, we don't have a plan?
They have a...
Not specific to elopement, no.
Right, but if that bill had passed, we would have to have one.
They'd be mandated.
Every school would be required to have one, as I understood that.
Yes. It requires public schools to create staff assistance for emergencies, safe teams, which we have a similar team.
Yeah, we have.
And school elopement plans provides requirements for the team, which I don't have in front of me, and a plan that requires and provides requirements for the elopement quick reference guides for certain, for certain students, requires public schools to annually submit their plans to district school board. So, the schools would have to annually submit their plans to the district, providing their response to children who elope.
So, if I'm hearing you, you would like for us to be proactive, since that will probably go through next year.
It will come back. And if there's another tragedy, it will come back quickly.
This is the, how many times has that been up to the...
It's been up almost as many as, I think this is only the second round, maybe the third.
Maybe officially.
Well, also restraint and seclusion, but we'll not have that discussion.
That's what I said it on, restraint.
That's a whole nother one.
Yeah, it's moving a lot faster.
Lisa, what, do you have a sense of what it meant when it referred to for certain students?
It's probably referring to ESE students.
Yeah, I was curious.
Because that's who elopes.
Yeah, well, I was curious as to where the line was, you know, do you include with that, you know, students that don't have IEPs, that just are mad at their science teacher and decide to go to Magic Market, or skip class?
No, I think they're targeting the most vulnerable students who will end up in a tragic, they're trying to prevent what happened in Hillsborough County. And that's probably when this got started four years ago.
Did it, I don't remember what version I also read, but did it not also refer to some students specifically by disability categories?
It didn't in this yet, and they might have removed that part of it. But the restraint and seclusion's been up a bunch of times, and we're going to see it come through, and that's going to be another work session.
It's going to be another work session.
That's a whole nother topic. But they do, it takes, it takes rounds, and it's very partisan, you know what I mean? It has to have a champion. And it's hard to champion something that started from the left when...
But as a deliverable, I mean, as a plan, like, it shouldn't be that hard to produce, right? It's like...
We almost already have it.
Five bullet points, like, and if we said, here's our district-wide plan of how to act, and then let that be the basis for every school, feel free to adjust at the school level, you know, based on, based on your surroundings, that we're kind of doing it, right? Like, it shouldn't be that difficult to do.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with you. I think we can address this pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think so. And I think we should celebrate the schools that have gone out and done this on their own.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, good.
Ms. Fortney, did you have some additional comments?
I was just curious about how 504s might fit in that, that it really is in the...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
For weighing in there, we appreciate it. So, now, I know, Mr. Townsend, you wanted to talk about the findings?
You know what, I think we should have, this should be a work session, I don't, I mean, there's a lot of stuff here, we should be worked through it, and I haven't had a chance to go through and read the whole thing myself. So, I think that's something that the whole board and the superintendent should discuss.
I did want to refer to something I forgot, will you get a second?
Mr. Proon, did you, did you have a comment?
Well, I'm trying, it was a few months ago when we met with the auditor, they did come and do the financial, and they would not, and you were there.
I was there.
He wouldn't even hand anything out, because he couldn't give us a definite of what was going to be on the list, because his boss in Tallahassee had not reviewed his findings, and they may add some or they may take some away. But I believe he offered, as soon as it's out in public, I'll come back to the board like I did for the financial, and he can review this. And I'm trying to remember if that's exactly what he said. I think he said he could come back, but he could not present to the board until it went to the state auditor.
Correct. And you're correct, that's exactly what I heard him say.
So, when this came yesterday, I just assumed when Mr. Townsend was, you know, asking about it, we'll just bring them back now that it's out, it just came out. They did send it to the board a month ago.
And there are two different types of findings. There are financial statement findings, and we were incredibly clean on that end. These are the operational findings, which is how we do business. And as Mr. Proon mentioned, they would not share that with us at that time. So, we, yes, so, Ms. Warbington, could you add?
I guess, I don't, I mean, I just, this was a surprise to get, and so, I was, like, maybe I just don't understand the rhythm of how these things go through. Like, they had the one in 16 and the one in 14. I'd like to see those two, so I can compare them, you know, and...
And we didn't have any finding, let me just tell you.
We didn't have any operational findings?
They referred to...
I think we did.
You always have.
In education, you are always going to have operational findings.
Right, but on the other side, we had a clean opinion.
We did.
Okay.
Operations.
On the financial, on the financial side, we had, they were exemplary.
Well, not in the beginning, when I was, but we got to that point, let me just...
This is a little bit of my opinion, but I think when they go through, some of these come out, you won't be as alarmed after you...
When you get, when they go through them.
Some of the recommendations we have.
And I would offer too, that just in sheer numbers, this is pretty miniscule compared to most organizations, it's not unusual to have a multitude of operational findings. Now, that's not to say that these aren't serious and shouldn't be addressed. So, it's just that...
I don't know that I'm alarmed, but I'm interested. Like, I am a geek for operations, and this is, you know, I mean, I, this is interesting. I didn't, I didn't even realize this was done. I mean, this is my first one of these.
Every three years, right?
Right. So, this is my, this is my first, my first one of these. So, I'm just interested in discussing it. Don't do today. What I would like to discuss very briefly is the July meeting of this, the roundtable meeting, perhaps the leading advocate for STEM teaching in Florida is a guy named Paul Cottle, who is a professor at Florida State University, he's a physics professor, he's had a kid from Fort Meade in his program recently. He has offered to come down and chat with us, like, he's given us three, given me three different dates that we worked for July. He has incredible insight into the realities of how the kids are prepared to come up there, what they need to be prepared with. I think it'd be a great thing for our math and science people to come engage with him, and he's done a lot of good work with Bay County, and also with Orange County has a really good program that he's engaged with. He and I have kind of become friends. So, if you guys would be open to having the July meeting be centered on a discussion about real math and science education. And then, one thing the staff should get credit for, all over the state, access to physics is declining. Fewer high schools are giving it.
Can't find the teachers, Billy.
Well, but in Polk County, we actually went in the other direction. We had four high schools, two years, two years ago, I think it was, that didn't have physics. Now, we only have two. Most other districts are going in the opposite way. So, I gave kudos to the science staff on that. But I think Paul has a lot of really interesting things to say, and I think it might be good to invite some of the math folks from Polk State as well, like, to sort of talk about math education. You guys good with that?
Great.
Yeah, so, we okay with that?
Preaching to the choir here.
We good here, we good here? Okay. So, if you don't mind, if you would send the contact information and the dates?
And he has money from, like, FSU pays him to go do this stuff from time to time, from time to time. So, we don't need to pay, we don't need to pay everything.
Let me get with Ms. Warbington, and then she'll probably work with you to set it up.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Can I follow up on him with that? I met with the Central Florida Girl Scouts of America, they have a STEM program for their badges, that we might be able to put in on the same roundtable. She has a little presentation she'd like to do to partner. They're already in some of our schools. But I'm back to the equity issue, how do they, and I'm working on that, how is it that this middle school has it and this one doesn't, kind of thing? So, could we?
Absolutely.
Put that in together, maybe as a...
I've heard it come at the same time.
Yes, and so, I will need to send her dates as well, so we can maybe coordinate.
And contact information.
Yes.
And one of Paul's big things, he's really an evangelist for girls and choctaw color getting into that, that's a good, big, big thing for him. So, it's really, you know, a good meeting.
I wanted to address what Sarah just mentioned, it's with a lot of programs. It's always been site-based management, and so, when those great programs come to the district, and I've sat on the other side and watched them, you know, it's always, it's never from the top, we should do this across the district. It's always go to the, shop it to the principal and whoever will buy in, you get, you know, you can do it at their schools. There is an equity issue with a lot of programs. I just wanted to, I've had that experience. I wanted to clarify, maybe because I understand elopement because I live in elopement world, it is specifically naming autism and intellectual delay, but those are the children that are running out of your classrooms. It's not your typical kids. And the one thing that they do have, I don't, that they would require, and I don't know if our schools have it, I'll review their plans, the ones that sent them, is a search grid of the campus that includes bodies of water, train tracks, and parks and playgrounds. So, they would have that readily available, so if they have to look, they know where they're going. So, I'll just link that when I send the information and we can review it. And it could be procedure, it could be, I don't know that everything has to be, I'm, I live in IEP world, so we write everything in documentation. But if it doesn't have to be a policy, if it can be something that we're proactive with, we're going to keep our kids safe, we're not going to be the county that loses a kid, then I'm all for however we implement it.
Well, and Lisa, that's, that really deserves elaboration. What's written in an IEP may be familiar to a child's teachers, but it's not going to be familiar with, the other teachers and personnel at the school may not know about it.
Right.
So, it may be that a concise, global guide is of use, because I think that's absolutely right. If you've got a, if you've got a child who is prone to this, and the child is with a, is it lunch, or with a teacher that is, or staff that is not familiar with the IEP, you know, all bets are off.
Right.
I mean, it's good to have it in the IEP, but what you're looking at is a global guideline that everybody would be familiar with.
Right. That call 911 thing, I would have done that automatically, but they don't.
Well, that's, that's what I'm talking about, something that should be very, that's very simple, is write it out, call 91, you know, like...
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for facilitating today. I want, is this a draft, the strategic plan? What are, I got this today. Do we all have this? Am I the only lucky person that got this?
I've not seen it yet, and I haven't had a chance to look it over yet.
Because I didn't know we had that.
No, it says 2016-17.
Through 2021.
I know, but it must have been, when you do a strategic plan, it's probably the old one, would be my, I guess.
Okay, I was, oh, it has the old logo, the old logo should have been, okay.
I have one more.
Yes, ma'am, before we go.
I'm just going to, okay, so, speaking of strategic planning, I thought when we did our retreat on March 5th, I thought at the end of that retreat that we requested as a board data pertaining to staff turnover by school.
We don't have minutes from that. Can you address that? Like, with Dr. Freho, he doesn't take, like, there's no...
It's not, it's not, I mean, typically in strategic planning retreats, there are no minutes.
Here's why they might be beneficial for a log.
I'm sorry?
Who records requests?
Did he put them up on the board, things that we wanted to address?
It was certainly, the capability to track turnover by school was something that was discussed.
Yeah, but there were several things at the very end we discussed. We discussed having the legislative staff ready to go. We discussed, but I don't know who records those requests.
So...
We should follow up.
Because when I sent my question, that I had to go in and speak with Superintendent Bird about, because it was just too much time invested, I started with that as the request. I thought I was requesting a follow-up on something that I thought we'd already agreed on. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And do you mind, do you mind sending that to the superintendent and asking her where we are with it?
I, she said it would take 110, it would take three months to gather what I asked for. And she can't even keep folks employed in that office as it is with the request that she has. So, we tried to work out a solution. I asked for the top 10 non-magnet, non-academy-type schools with the lowest staff turnover, and I thought that would help us narrow, it would be the opposite.
Set it for you.
Yeah. But what I'm trying to find out is what our really good principals do and what our really bad ones do, and, you know, that's all, I'm going to say it.
It's less the deliverable than the capability. We, I know we keep that data, I know we keep schools, it's, somebody's got to put it together in a place where we can...
And if not, we should be, that's my feeling.
Well, that's, that's why I pulled those, that's why I pulled the transfer sheets off of the, that's why I pulled the AHR sheets off consent, because I think that data is largely on those sheets.
It is, but that's on an Excel sheet as it is.
Right, that's why I want the original Excel sheets.
Exactly. Yeah, I'm on the same page.
We'll follow up on that.
Well, okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
Maybe. No, I don't. Thank you for the people that participated, I think this is very useful. It's fortunate we didn't have more.
Okay. So, there's nothing else?